Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Elmhurst City Council for Monday, April 7, 2025, to order. And I would ask if you would all please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) 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 (inaudible)
Thank you, Clerk Tamer. Please call the roll.
Cahill?
Here.
Toledo?
Here.
Park?
Here.
Udara?
Here.
Bastido?
Here.
Nardini?
Here.
Brennan?
Here.
Erby?
Here.
Bellinger?
Here.
Veremis?
Here.
Hill? Absent. Shenko?
Here.
Jensen?
Here.
Bram?
Here.
Thirteen present, one absent.
Thirteen present, one absent. We have a quorum. We're going on to item 3.1 on the agenda, and probably then on to 3.2.
Oh, my gosh. What's going on?
Okay. I feel like I should call this Immaculate Conception Day, but we won't do all that at once. We have two proclamations, and they're both very exciting. The first one involves the anniversary of the Immaculate Conception Grade School. Father Tom, Father Jeremy, or whoever else you're going to bring, come on up here. Line up here for the presentation of the proclamation. There you go. I know you've got a new knee, so I don't want to... (laughing) Just kidding. All right. All right. Welcome, everyone. I had the great pleasure, I think Alderman Toledo was there as well, and to attend the 125th anniversary celebration at IC. I got to say, I was most impressed by what I saw in the classrooms. Learned a few things. Guinea pigs and hamsters do not make good pets. But I was very impressed by what I saw. I was very happy to be involved, and so I wanted to present this proclamation, which I would like to read. Whereas Immaculate Conception Grade School has been rooted in the Catholic faith and its mission in increasing an educational environment of love, faith, and justice, celebrates 125 years of growing in the light of Christ. And whereas Immaculate Conception Grade School began in 1900 with one classroom, two nuns of the Sisters of St. Agnes, and 40 students, it flourishes today with devoted staff members, community support, and strong enrollment. And whereas Immaculate Conception Grade School currently serves over 550 students in maximizing their potential through a strong academic program blended with the teachings of the Catholic faith. And whereas Immaculate Conception Grade School prepares its students for future achievement in high school, college, and beyond through instilling Catholic values and self-discipline. And whereas Immaculate Conception Grade School has grown substantially in its 125 years through expanding its preschool offerings, enhancing its curriculum, and engaging in improvement and renovation projects, its unwavering commitment to academic excellence, faith, family, and service have stayed constant since its humble beginnings. And whereas Immaculate Conception Grade School will continue its tradition of educating and supporting its students so that they embody Catholic values for another 125 years and more, now therefore, I, Scott M. Levin, Mayor of the City of Elmhurst, on behalf of the City Council and the Elmhurst community, do hereby proclaim April 7, 2025, is Immaculate Conception Grade School Day. (applause) Thank you very much, Mayor, and thank you, City Council, for giving us this proclamation and showing your support for our school and for our history, our present, our past, and our future. We're very blessed because we say we are IC, and that, of course, means we are also Elmhurst. That 125 years ago, those that won before us had the wisdom to start a school called Immaculate Conception. And throughout the years, we've seen our school flourish because of the commitment of so many people, staff, teachers, administration, but of course, of the Elmhurst community. We're very grateful in many ways that support has come to us through the years. And we know because of the willingness and generosity of people like yourselves here, our mayor, city council, police department, fire department, and others, we continue to have the experience of learning for our students in which we say that IC is their home, Elmhurst is their home. We tell them, once you're a Knight, you're always a Knight, because we form a family, a family at IC, but also an Elmhurst family as well. So I have the honor, on behalf of all of us here, expressing our most sincere gratitude for your support, for your recognition, our thanks. I certainly know that we're grateful, we're prayerful, and know always that certainly you're always welcome to be with us. We look forward to many, many years ahead of continuing to serve the Elmhurst community, such that as the students who are here today and all the graduates through the years, that many, many more might come through our doors and become part of this family of Immaculate Conception. God bless you all, and thank you. (applause) All right. We're going to do a shift change, so we're going to let you guys file out, and you only get one. You only get one, yeah. You guys got to share, all right. Now, watch your step. Come on through here. Well, continuing the theme, we have the IC wrestling team, the varsity wrestling team, if you want to come up. I got the right sport? Yeah, all right. (laughing)
Why don't we do it up here? Then we'll... You guys are in Class AAA here with all of these people.
Come on up, fellas. Okay. Well, we have a lot of championships to celebrate here in Elmhurst, and not a few from IC, so we're very proud to have you back again. Coach Alkaser, who I haven't met, come on over here. All right. I have a proclamation for this event, which is also exciting. Whereas participation in and support of sports and athletic achievement is an important part of IC Catholic Prep's education in developing leadership skills and the creation of a tradition of excellence. And whereas IC Catholic Prep is home to the Knights Varsity Wrestling Team led by head coach Danny Alkaser, and where is the sportsmanship, determination, and talent of the 2025 Varsity Wrestling Team led to a 46-17 win over Washington to become the 2025 IHSA IIA Dual Team State Champions. And whereas nine IC Catholic Prep wrestlers finish as IHSA Class II State Individual Medalists, and three IC Catholic Prep wrestlers, I don't know why these guys get named individually, but Brody Kelly, Devin Casey, and Max Comby finished as champions in the individual state finals tournament in their respective weight classes. And whereas the Knights Varsity Wrestling Team's success is just one example of the many valuable organizations for Elmhurst youth that continues to be a source of pride for the city and represents the city in a fashion that is meaningful, healthy, and worthy of acknowledgement. Now therefore, I, Scott M. Levin, Mayor of the City of Elmhurst, with great pride congratulate the 2025 IC Catholic Prep Knights Wrestling Team on their tremendous achievements this season, and do hereby proclaim April 7, 2025, also, as IC Catholic Prep State Wrestling Champions Day. (applause) I'm going to let you introduce your other coaches, Coach Tom and Jer... No. And some of the people you may want to introduce, all of them for the wrestling team.
All right. I'd just like to thank our assistant coaching staff, Coach Randy Spalding, right here to my right, Coach Corey Stanley, right there. If you raise your hand, you can see Coach Stanley. Coach Tony Norton, next to Stanley, and then our administration, Athletic Director Rick Burtonshaw, our president, Bob Cronin. We couldn't do anything without the support of our administration and staff. We're extremely grateful for the opportunity to be recognized by the City of Elmhurst, and we're proud of these wrestlers for their hard work, dedication, determination that they put in every day to their craft, and it shows out on the mat, they're state champions. Thank you guys again for recognizing us. We're going to continue to try to represent Elmhurst in the best way possible. Thank you.
You're a little bigger team, but our tradition is if the coaches and wrestlers, if you'll come through the City Council, they'd each like to say congratulations, shake a hand, we'll wear out their hands, but if you'll come around this way. Back line first? All right, back line first. Coaches, you can come too. Yeah. Come right around here.
We shake it out every day.
Yeah. This is good exercise.
Congratulations. 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 Congratulations.
We're going to line up and do a big group picture with everyone, okay? So, line back up, wrestling team, we're going to get you in the picture, we'll do one big group picture.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
Okay. My pleasure. So wrestlers, line back up the way you were.
Congratulations.
And the rest of the people?
Congratulations to you.
Congratulations. 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 Hi, Father. Congratulations. Hi, Father.
Congratulations. Father.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
All right.
You guys want to fall in here?
Yes.
Anthony.
Thank you, guys.
Come on.
Me in here? All right. You want to block that?
Truly.
All right.
One last round of applause for both the councils. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
(applause)
All right. We're going to resume the council meeting. You're welcome to stay, of course, but if not, please, you can file out at this time.
I still use these, man, but I haven't received them.
I'm just going to double check to make sure.
That is crisp as...
Let me just double check.
I don't have them enough.
There you go.
All right. We'll move on with the agenda. We're on to receipt of written communications from the public. Is there any member of the public that has a written communication that he or she would like to present to the council? If so, please raise your hand. Seeing none, we'll move on to public forum. Clerk Tamer, has anyone signed in for public forum this evening?
No, Mayor.
All right. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to make public comment but did not have the opportunity to sign in before the meeting started? If so, please raise your hand. Seeing none, we'll move on to announcements. Are there any announcements from the dais? Okay. Consent agenda. Clerk Tamer, please read the consent agenda.
7.1 minutes of the regular meeting of the Elmhurst City Council on March 3, 2025. 7.2 minutes of the regular meeting of the Elmhurst City Council on March 17, 2025. 7.3 accounts payable, April 7, 2025, $869,130.94. 7.4 appointment of Kit Wrecker to the Elmhurst Senior Citizen Commission. 7.5 appointment of Shaheen Rulph to the City of Elmhurst and Elmhurst University Commission. 7.6 report, case number 25, ZBA 03, Rothside Yard setback variation, 256 East Adelia. 7.7 report, case 24, PO8 Honda conditional use pylon and PUD 300 West Grand. 7.8 report, case 25, PO1 conditional use to amend PUD with site development allowances, map amendment, plat of consolidation, 1100 South York Street. 7.9 report, petition for annexation and annexation agreement, O South 551 Kendall Avenue, O613 305 015, then O5561 Kendall Avenue, PIN O613 305 006, then O South 571 Kendall Avenue, PIN O613 305 007. 7.10 report, TIFF business incentives. 7.11 report, Rideu Page. 7.12 report, Phase III temporary use permit. 7.13 report, 2025 water main replacement bids. 7.14 report, provision of custodial services. 7.15 report, fuel island improvements, balancing change order. 7.16 report, three Ford Maverick AWD all-wheel-drive hybrids. See item 10.2. 7.17 ordinance granting a conditional use permit for a planned unit development with a site development allowance for the construction of an administrative office addition on the property commonly known as 779 in 851 South York Street, Elmhurst, Illinois, Visitation Catholic Church. 7.18, an ordinance to add section 44.97 entitled "Right Turn Only Intersections," enumerated to Article 6 entitled "Special Stops" of Chapter 44 entitled "Motor Vehicles and Traffic" of the Elmhurst Municipal Code. 7.19, an ordinance approving and authorizing the execution of a non-exclusive license agreement by and between Elmhurst Walk-in Assistant Network, Inc., and the City of Elmhurst, Rideu Page, and Cook Counties, Illinois. 7.20, an ordinance authorizing the City of Elmhurst to waive bidding and purchase one 2025 Ford F-350 and one 2025 Ford F-550 for the city's street division, and authorizing the disposal and trade-in of one 2013 Ford F-450, one 2004 Ford F-250, and one 2015 Ford F-250. 7.21, a resolution to approve the allocation of the 2025 motor fuel tax dollars to the general maintenance section for the purpose of maintaining streets and highways. 7.22, a resolution authorizing the issuance of a notice of award and authorizing the execution of a contract for the Elma Avenue reconstruction and Elm Park resurfacing project, Project 24-23 for the City of Elmhurst, Illinois. 7.23, a resolution approving and authorizing the purchase and planting of Parkway Trees for the 2025 tree purchase and planting program in the City of Elmhurst, Illinois. 7.24, a resolution authorizing Rideu Page County gasoline and diesel procurement joint purchase. 7.25, a resolution authorizing the issuance of a notice of award and authorizing the execution of a contract for the 2025 asphalt rejuvenating program. 7.26, a resolution authorizing the issuance of award and authorizing the execution of a contract for the 2025 crack sealing and seal coating program. 7.27, a resolution authorizing the issuance of award and authorizing the execution of the contract for the 2025 concrete pavement patching project for the City of Elmhurst, Illinois. 7.28, a resolution authorizing the issuance of a notice of award and authorizing the execution of a contract for the 2025 pavement striping program. 7.29, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a professional construction engineering services agreement between the City of Elmhurst, Illinois, and Baxter &amp; Woodman, Inc., for the 2025 sanitary sewer and manhole rehabilitation project. 7.30, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a professional engineering services agreement between the City of Elmhurst, Illinois, and Baxter &amp; Woodman, Inc., for the NPDES permit special conditions compliance assistance for the PFAS and industrial user surveys and reports. 7.31, a resolution to approve and adopt the sidewalk master plan. And 7.32, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a reimbursement agreement between True Cemeteries, Inc., and the City of Elmhurst, Illinois.
Thank you, Clerk Tamer. Is there any item on the consent agenda that any alderman would like to remove, either to vote against or for further discussion? Alderman Bram?
7.10.
7.10. Alderman Toledo?
7.31.
7.31. Anyone else? 7.10 and 7.31. All right. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda minus items 7.10 and 7.31? Alderman Bastido with the motion. Alderman Cahill with the second. Clerk Tamer, call the roll.
Cahill?
Aye.
Toledo?
Aye.
Park?
Aye.
Udara?
Aye.
Bastido?
Aye.
Nardini?
Aye.
Brennan?
Aye.
Erby?
Aye.
Bellinger?
Aye.
Veremis?
Aye.
Hill?
Absent. Shenko?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Bram?
Aye.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays, one absent.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays, one absent. The consent agenda minus items 7.10 and 7.31 passes. Clerk Tamer, would you read the report for 7.10?
Therefore, the Development Planning and Zoning Committee recommends that the City Council approve the TIFF business incentive programs for TIFF IV, TIFFs, and the downtown TIFF as presented and authorize the city attorney to prepare the necessary documents. Signed Chair Alderman Chris Jensen, Vice Chair Alderman Jennifer Veremis, and Alderman Fifth Ward Tina Park.
All right. Can I have a motion to approve 7.10? Alderman Jensen with the motion. Alderman Veremis with the second. Alderman Jensen.
Thank you, Mayor. This report is a result of referral from Alderman Bram and Shenko to review the TIFF business incentive programs offered by the city. I'd like to thank them for the referral, as it led to a comprehensive review of our current policy by the Elmhurst Economic Development Commission over several meetings, with Alderman Veremis providing updates of the progress they're making to the DPC, DPZ Committee. The EDC came up with numerous recommendations in addition to feedback on the items specifically mentioned in the referral. Subsequently, the DPC Committee took the recommendations and feedback, and with some modifications, drafted and passed a report on the agenda tonight. The changes are listed in detail in the report, and many of the ideas from the referral are represented there. We believe that rearranging and simplifying the facade and retail grants, the latter becoming the marketing grant, adding more eligible projects, including some related to renewable energy, sustainability, and storm art management, while streamlining the application process, will enhance the program and help super investment in our community. We ask for your support. Thank you.
Alderman Jensen. Alderman Bram?
Thank you. First, I want to start out and thank the commission for reviewing this. I don't know if that was prior to the committee or in the middle of the process, because I know that they met, I believe, six times in total to discuss the referral. Thanks to the committee as well, meeting, I think it was two or three times, to discuss this referral. Let me start by saying that I'm in support, and I will be voting for the recommendation report from the DP&amp;Z Committee. But with that said, I do have various questions, as well as comments, on what I have seen in regards to the review. I start by asking the committee if they can expand upon some of the rationale or some of the discussion. I did look at the meeting minutes from two meetings ago, but since the committee needs to meet again to approve the latest discussion, I have not been able to see those. So my questions are in regards to, the first and foremost is the murals or public art. Is that a new addition? How come that was decided to be added in regards to this referral?
So that was added, that was one of the ideas that came up with. The EDC suggested adding that, and they asked us to put a dollar value on that, the reason being, you know, having public art and murals around town kind of enhances the vibe of the community.
Alderman Jensen, you might want to pull the microphone. There you go. Thank you.
Enhances the, you know, look and feel of the community and neighborhood, and makes it more inviting to consumers to come in and use our businesses, patronize our businesses.
Thank you. May I...
Alderman Bram?
Thanks. So in regards to the murals, I did see some of the requests for review from the referral was about rehabilitating historic properties, adding rooftop decks. I didn't see the commission review any of that. The meeting minutes that I saw from all the commission meetings really, well, not really, just spoke about doing a consolidation application process. I didn't see much other than comments of signed grants, and, as you stated, Alderman Jensen, the comments of the murals and adding a dollar value to that on some of these other topics that were in the referral. Could one of you please, or Mr. Mayor, may I ask the committee to expand upon, were some of these other topics discussed, like rehabilitating or advocating allocating monies for rehabilitating historic properties, rooftop decks, et cetera?
Alderman Veremis, I think I missed your hand up. Sure. Thank you, Mayor. Well, I'd like to start by saying that, as Alderman Bram had mentioned, that this discussion took place over several meetings at Economic Development Commission that is posted to board docs, so if anybody wanted to weigh in, they certainly could have done so at any point in the process. I myself kept giving updates to DPZ on what the status was, at least tens or so times. So happy to answer the questions, sitting here now, and to your point, or to your question to answer it. We, I know that the commission did look at rooftop decks, historical properties, and what we have in the TIFF budget, it wouldn't move the needle on those projects. And I know that they did comparison, staff looked at different communities, and they modeled a lot of this after what Lombard has done and the success that Lombard has had there. So basically, the cost to add a rooftop deck would far exceed the max of $240,000.
All right. Did you want to add anything, Alderman Jensen?
With the historical preservation stuff, that committee, or that commission's being reinvigorated, and we're going to, I know that they're looking at meeting more frequently and looking at some of these issues, so I think some of those things might come up there as well.
In fact, that is...
All right. I think we're back to Alderman Bram.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you for the summary. I just haven't seen, at least in my later recollections, something going to the commission. And as Alderman Veremis stated, was what differed in the meeting minutes, at least, from the commission. I did not see anything mentioned about the historical properties rehabilitation aspect of it. I don't recall if I saw anything about the rooftops other than the committee discussion, so I appreciate that insight. I wasn't aware that this was moved to the commission. Like I said earlier tonight, I didn't know if the committee discussed it and then it was moved to the commission, or it went straight to the commission. My expectation was it was going to DP&amp;Z and staying in DP&amp;Z. So late in the game, when I did hear that it was... And I know that they did comparison staff, looked at different communities, and they modeled a lot of this after what Lombard has done and the success that Lombard has had there. So basically, the cost to add a rooftop deck would far exceed the max of $240,000.
All right. Did you want to add anything, Alderman Jensen?
With the historical preservation stuff, that committee or that commission is being reinvigorated, and we're going to, I know that they're looking at meeting more frequently and looking at some of these issues, so I think some of those things might come up there as well.
In fact, that is...
That was something we discussed.
All right. I think we're back to Alderman Bram.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you for the summary. I've just haven't seen, at least in my later recollections, is something going to the commission. And as Alderman Veremas stated, was what differed in the meeting minutes, at least, from the commission. I did not see anything mentioned about the historical properties rehabilitation aspect of it. I don't recall if I saw anything about the rooftops other than the committee discussion. So I appreciate that insight. I wasn't aware that this was moved to the commission. Like I said earlier tonight, I didn't know if the committee discussed it and then it was moved to the commission or it went straight to the commission. My expectation was it was going to DP and Z and staying in DP and Z. So late in the game, when I did hear that it was at the commission is when I did look up the meeting minutes to try to play catch up on what the discussion was, but that was pretty much not too many weeks ago. So I appreciate the answers to the questions. My last question is in regards to increasing the dollars for signs. I did speak to Alderman Jensen earlier, Alderman Jensen, I'm having a problem talking tonight, earlier tonight, and I do understand the thought process behind it from at least the committee's perspective of trying to reduce, if not totally eliminate, legal nonconforming signs in town by increasing the dollar amount. But if we really had a concern about legal nonconforming signs, we as a policymaking body could pretty much change the policy and do it that way versus allocating additional dollars. I personally will speak to the side of, part of the referral was asking to remove the sign grant because myself and Alderman Shenko, not to speak for her, she could speak if she likes, but felt that it really doesn't do anything in regards to property value. It doesn't increase the property value. It doesn't do anything for the business community as a whole. Obviously, it helps the business potentially, but I thought that the other request in part of this referral was more important than allocating dollars for the sign grant.
Thank you.
Alderman Jensen? I would counter that the sign grant does improve the surrounding area of the business by, you know, improving the appearance and functionality of the signage on the buildings. And rather than having an old dilapidated sign, if you can get a new conforming sign in there, it probably looks a little bit better. That's a personal opinion.
All right, just Alderman Bramis?
I was going to say something somewhere.
All right. Yeah, I just want to add, we can't just tell people to take out their legally nonconforming signs that are legally nonconforming, legally so, so we'd have to pay them to do that. Anyway, did you have additional discussion? All right, anyone else on this topic? All right, so we have a motion to approve 7.10. Call the roll.
Cahill?
Aye.
Toledo?
Aye.
Park?
Aye.
Nudera?
Aye.
Bastido?
Aye.
Nardini?
Aye.
Brennan?
Aye.
Erby?
Aye.
Bellinger?
Aye.
Veremas?
Aye.
Hill, absent.
Shenko?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Bram?
Aye.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays, one absent.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays, one absent, 7.10 passes. 7.31, Clerk Tamer, please read the resolution.
A resolution to approve and adopt the sidewalk master plan.
All right. Who did this come out of?
That one's came out.
Over there. All right, I have a motion to approve Resolution 7.31. Alderman Brennan with the motion. Alderman Nardini with the second. Alderman Brennan.
Thank you, Mayor. So this is a resolution that's tied to a report that we approved a few weeks back regarding the sidewalk master plan. I'll yield the floor to the alderman with the question.
All right, Alderman Toledo, did you want to comment?
Just pull the report to vote, no, in accordance with my no vote on the report. Thank you.
All right, anyone else? Clerk Tamer?
Okay, Cahill?
Aye.
Toledo?
Nay.
Park?
I'm sorry, I missed what the, this is being called?
Voting on the sidewalk master plan.
Oh. I just did that for drama.
It worked.
Yeah.
Nudera?
Aye.
Bastido?
Aye.
Nardini?
Aye.
Brennan?
Aye.
Erby?
Aye.
Bellinger?
Aye.
Veremas?
Aye.
Hill, absent.
Shenko?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Bram?
Aye.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays, one absent.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays, one absent, 7.31 passes. On to item eight, committee reports. Clerk Tamer, please read the report.
It is therefore the recommendation of the Public Affairs and Safety Committee that the city council authorize the architectural design and engineering of the police station project in accordance with the recommendations outlined here within and authorize the city attorney to prepare the necessary city council documents. Signed Alderman Michael Brennan, Chair, Alderman Jacob Hill, Vice Chair, and Alderman Guido Nardini.
All right, may I have a motion to bring 8.1 for approval? Alderman Brennan with the motion. Alderman Nardini with the second. Alderman Brennan.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank goodness the city clerk didn't read the whole report because it is six pages in length. So I'm going to take a little more time than normal this evening. There's a lot of content in the report that I want to make sure that I highlight and give it its due course here. So, you know, the journey for the police station report has been a very long one. It started back in 2017, 2018 with a space need analysis report generated by FGM Architects. The final report identified several million dollars of needed repairs and a space deficiency of roughly 23,000 square feet at our current facility. In a joint meeting between Public Works and Building Committee and Public Affairs and Safety Committee, three potential options were considered back in 2018. Option one was to renovate and build an addition onto the current facility, $22 million at that point in time. Option two was to construct a new facility, approximately $29 million in cost. Option three was to repair the current facility and not address the space and design deficiencies of the current station. That was about $4.2 million at that time. In 2018, the Public Affairs and Safety Committee explored these three options, including the exploration of potential site location changes for the new facility. Details can be found in the report on what was done there. After much deliberation, the committee recommended a new facility at the current location of 125 East First Street. Then the pandemic hit, bringing stoppage to the entire process. And in 2013, the city asked FGM Architects to take a look at the estimates, update them, and bring it back to PANS. So we still had the three options, renovate and build the current facility. It was $22 million in 2018. It grew to $40 million. Option two, construct a new facility, $29 million back in 2018. It grew to $48 million. Repair the current facility and not address the design deficiencies was 4.2, and that grew to 10 million. So part of the process is at committee is to ask the hard questions, and I appreciate, you know, Alderman Nardini, you know, really wanting to better understand and vet these numbers. So we set out and got a second opinion, you know, on FGM's estimates. We engaged a local architect. It's one of the nice things about Elmhurst, we have a lot of talented people. And this architect volunteered his time to sit down with city staff as well as FGM to understand the assumptions and the estimates. Through this process, the local architect's conclusions were that the estimates that we had to build a new police station, he felt were accurate and in line with the assumptions. And the estimate to renovate and expand actually might be a few million dollars low due to the unknowns that always occur during renovating a big project like that. So over the past 12 months, the police station options have gone through much deliberation at committee. Eventually, we arrived at the same conclusion as the 2018 PNS committee. However, we're not comfortable with moving a recommendation forward until we understood how the city might pay for this important capital investment. We turned to the finance committee and asked that they explore options to fund the new police station at its current location. So the finance committee reviewed several potential bond structures, arriving at a recommendation to begin with a $3.5 million bond issuance to fund the architectural design and engineering, and then issue the balance of the bonds when construction began. This was very attractive when it came back to committee because any project of this size, the likelihood of getting grants, whether state or federal, the likelihood goes up if you have a shovel-ready project. So all three of us at committee liked this recommendation. Upon council approval to this report, architectural design engineering is targeted to begin in 2025 with construction starting in 2026. Also, by limiting the bond issuance to a smaller amount, you know, it's possible the city might get more favorable interest rates in the future for the larger bond issuance. The committee also recommended, the finance committee also recommended the bond repayment schedule be structured so that the principal payment amounts increase as other city debt decreases, better aligning the repayment schedule with future available revenues and reducing the amount of new funding the city must obtain. The finance committee then discussed the sale of city-owned property to fund a portion of the debt payment. The committee reviewed the list of city real estate assets and focused on 180 West Park Office Building. This property is targeted as a temporary location to host the police station administrative functions during construction as it will save the city costs from purchasing or renting other commercial properties for temporary use. We also found out with new police stations that have gone up in the area, that was a significant amount of incremental dollars that other communities had to spend, and us leveraging a city asset is very advantageous. The finance committee agreed and recommended that the property be sold after the station is complete and the proceeds from the sale to be used, and this is all recommendation, by the way, be used for the new police station. The finance committee came to a consensus of which revenue stream should fund the balance of the debt service payments. The committee recommended increasing the hotel rate tax by 1 percentage point to 5% providing an estimated $117,000 annually, noting the proposed rate of 5% is comparable to other municipalities in the area. The finance committee also recommend the balance of the required funding to be paid by property taxes. Public safety is one of the core services provided by the city, and all residents and businesses benefit. So the way that that breaks down and the way that was modeled, an average annual property tax for a $500,000 median Elmhurst home will be approximately $53 a year over the next 21 years. Said another way, the average taxpayer will pay about $1,113 over the next 21 years at an aggregate to help fund and improve fully functional police station for Elmhurst, which meets the needs of modern policing. Technology has really drive, drove, you know, what is done in our community and how we keep it safe. So it's very important that we have a facility that will help us support and, you know, grow and keep up with the times. It should be noted, these amounts are based upon current projections, current interest rates. The actual repayment schedules will be finalized when the city issues the general obligation bonds. So all that was necessary for us to really sit down and continue our deliberation. So I really appreciate the work that was done by the finance committee. As we sat down and continued our deliberation, we requested background information on the city's property taxes. City staff presented the 2023 tax levy rankings of DuPage County communities that were inclusive, excuse me, of fire department and districts, just so we're comparing apples to apples, and noted that Elmhurst has the third lowest property tax rate among DuPage communities. So for that same $500,000 house in Elmhurst, that house pays $711 to the city of Elmhurst. This compares to communities on the high end of the rankings for that same $500,000 house where they were paying over $2,000 to the municipality. I'm happy to say this highlights the city's commitment to keeping property taxes as low as possible for its property owners. And some might be saying, wow, you know, it seems like our taxes are way higher than that. There are a whole lot of things that go into your tax bill, the school, the library, the park district in the city. The city constitutes about 7% of everyone's tax bill. So what was also interesting, I found pretty fascinating, was the city does levy property taxes for its public safety pensions. This is, by law, we have to do this. So we do see those increases in our tax bill, but over, since 2009, we've been able to keep our levy relatively flat because even though we're increasing what we're contributing to, you know, the pensions, we have been able to expand the tax base. So I think it's pretty impressive that the city of Elmhurst has been able to keep the tax levy relatively flat over so many years. And it just demonstrates how thriving and some really good works being done in the city. I'm almost done. All right, so the committee considered timing of the project as well, both for the construction and financing. The committee cited the delay due to the pandemic was only, that only increased construction costs and further postponement would similarly increase costs. So we came to the conclusion that even though it's never a good time to do a project of this size, if we waited, the estimates from FGM is every year that we wait, we'd be looking at 5% growth on the overall cost due to inflation and other factors. This report recommends that the city proceed with a request for proposal or request for qualifications to obtain the service firm to complete, you know, the architectural design and engineering phase of this project. That's just one step. So there are a number of steps that will require this council's approval, the issuance of the bonds, selection of the firm, you know, for the architectural and design work, selection of the construction firm and authorized to proceed with construction, modification to the hotel motel tax and future property tax levies, and the sale eventually of 180 West Park post-construction. As you can see, this has been a long journey, but I'm super excited with the committee's recommendation to move forward with the best police station option to construct a new facility. Before wrapping up here, I do want to thank, you know, Vice Chair Hill, Alderman Nardini. This was a heavy lift. We did a lot of work. I'm very proud of the work that we did. I also want to thank the finance committee and Director Coyle for the work that you did. Without that information, we would not have been able to get a report out of our committee. So thank you for that. I'd like to thank Chief McLean and everybody that contributed to the report, but the knowledge of chiefs that he has with respect to his operation was just invaluable. I definitely understand a lot more with respect to police operations and, you know, I really appreciate your partnership there, chief. So, that's details in the report. And Mayor, if I could, I'm going to share some personal perspective here. I've always been in support of a new police station, doing something material that increases the operational efficiency of our wonderful police department. I've come to the conclusion by answering one, this conclusion, by answering one simple question: Is the current police department sufficient to carry out Elmhurst Police Department operations into the future? The answer is no. So, we have to do something here. This was definitely validated, as I attended on February 20th, an open house that was hosted by the mayor and the chief, and 50 people showed up for touring the police department. I, Chief, almost ran out of tour guides, but we got everybody through the tour. 30 people remained for a Q and A and a presentation and Q and A with the chief and the mayor. And what I thought was very fascinating that, and I know that some of the people in the crowd were probably like, this police department's 35 years old. How on earth, why on earth do we have to replace this? So, I know there's some dissenters that took two, three hours out of their night to come and take the tour. And I stuck around as well. I, Jim, you were there, Alderman Nudera. I'm trying to think who else was there. I think that may have been it. But I thought it was quite fascinating. When we got to the Q and A, I was waiting, oh, boy. I hope the chief and mayor ready for some hard questions. There wasn't a single person in this 30-person group that stuck around that brought up the question of, well, I still don't see why we need a new police station. That was pretty telling to me. The questions that we got were more around the bidding process, some of the next steps, whether or not more police would be, more administrators would be needed for the new department, maintenance questions. So, I thought that was very telling, that these 30 people that stuck around for this part of the process, that they really didn't dissent on the idea of building a new police station. This has been on the agenda for numerous committees since 2017. So, this has been out there for a while. And it's unfortunate that during this time horizon, the project's gone from $29 million to $48 million to complete. There's nothing we can do about the past. However, we do have the ability to impact today and tomorrow. I'm confident in the work and recommendation from this committee. It has been a privilege to present this to you tonight, and I ask my fellow Alderman for your support. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Brennan. Discussion? Alderman Nardini.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Briefly, I want to thank my Chair, Mike Brennan, for the leadership throughout the whole process, but in particular for this right now in general to the public, I suppose. Discussion and deliberation happens at committee. It is very rare that that amount of explanation takes place in full council. And I'm imagining if somebody is reading a report or if somebody is watching this on YouTube, you just got a very patient and deliberate explanation in full council about why this is needed. The reason I ask to be acknowledged is almost not worth mentioning, but just for the sake of accuracy, the local expert that my Chair, Mike Brennan, mentioned, Rob Martinelli, is not an architect. He's Senior Vice President of Construction. For the sake of accuracy, I want to make sure that those were different, although for his purpose of being a second opinion, it's immaterial.
Thank you. Alderman Nardini. All right. I guess this is one of those things we've talked about. I will say, well, let's call the vote first, and then I'll say.
Cahill.
Aye.
Toledo.
Aye.
Park.
Aye.
Nudera.
Aye.
Bastido.
Aye.
Nardini.
Aye.
Brennan.
Aye.
Erby.
Aye.
Bellinger.
Aye.
Verimus.
Aye.
Hill absent.
Shenko.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Bram.
Aye.
13 ayes, 0 nays, 1 absent.
13 ayes, 0 nays, 1 absent. The report passes. I would like to say that I was, I can't remember if I was Chair or Vice Chair on PAS when this whole thing started, and the chief, the then-chief came in and talked about what we needed, and we started looking at it. This is one of the most thoroughly vetted reports that I think I've seen on the council. It sort of parallels the flooding kinds of things we undertook where we looked carefully before we started spending money. I wanted to assure the public that we wouldn't be doing this if it wasn't something we had investigated so carefully. I'm fully convinced that the police station, not the police department, the police station is in very bad shape, and I would be very proud that we're taking steps to move forward. I want to thank Chairman Brennan for the very thorough analysis, Chairman Toledo and your committee for a lot of creative and very detailed analysis. This shows the quality of the work that our council does when we have a very serious issue like this. Director Coyle, I know you were back there providing, well, you weren't back there, but you were behind the committee, providing a lot of careful analysis. Chief McLean, I don't know how many, I saw the list of the number of clubs and groups that you were going to visit. You informed the public very well about what the need was. You didn't throw any kind of fit that you had to have it. You just went out and explained why it was good, not for the department. If it's good for the department, it's good for the city. We always say public safety is our number-one concern, and I'm quite confident this is a very important component of that. So, I thank everyone for your hard work. I'm sorry this got a little politicized. This is the right thing to do. People ask, are we having a referendum? We are the elected officials. We don't, we're a home rule community. We don't need a referendum. We need people to do their homework and do diligence to make sure that they're properly representing the constituents who put us up here in the dais, and I think we've done it. So, thank you all very much. Let's do something like ordinances. 10.1, Clerk Tamer. Oh, reports and recommend, well, that's me. I'm such a humble guy. All right. Well, a few things. If you know a young adult interested in a career or interested in firefighting, they should join the Elmhurst Fire Department Junior Fire Academy Day. It's a unique learning experience. It's designed for young adults interested in becoming firefighters. The day will include hands-on activities and demonstrations, providing an opportunity to experience real-life scenarios and gain a better understanding of the fire profession. So, this is for young adults between the ages of 14 and 20. It'll be on April 26, between 10:00 a.m. and 2:00 p.m. at the Fire Training Tower located at 910 North Addison Avenue. Space is limited, as they say in the commercials. Registration required. So, if you visit our website, you can register. Registration will close on April 23 for the April 26 Academy. Also, join us for the Senior Community Conversation to discover valuable resources and connect with local organizations, explore services for Elmhurst seniors. This free event will be held on Friday, May 2, between 10:00 a.m. and 1:00 p.m. at the Keese Recreation Center, former Redeemer Center. I encourage you to put the word out on that. I want to congratulate all those who were elected or reelected, particularly the hard-fought battle by Alderman Bastido, Jensen, and Brennan. I know you guys were really sweating it. All you needed was an opponent. We will be saying goodbye to certain Aldermen at our next council meeting, and we will be swearing in the reelected and the newly-elected Aldermen on May 5. So, stand by for that. That is all I have. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. A couple items. A reminder that this Saturday will be the first day of the annual spring cleanup. That does not include yard waste, but includes almost everything else in your house. But check the city website for the list of acceptable items. So, this Saturday, April 12, it'll be for residents who have a Wednesday collection day. Then Saturday, April 26, for residents who have a Thursday collection day, and May 3, for residents who have a Friday collection day. The other item that I have is related to the Illinois tollway work. They will be removing a bridge that crosses over the Prairie Path and Valette, and that date has moved a little bit, but they are going to be closing Valette and Electric Avenue, estimated on Wednesday, April 16. And that'll be for seven days that that'll be closed. We've been working with the tollway and their contractor to make sure that's properly signed. It's been done before, but to really expedite that work, they need to close the road. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, City Manager. Any other reports or recommendations from the dais? All right. Now, 10.1, Clerk Tamer, please read the ordinance.
An ordinance approving and authorizing the execution of a non-exclusive license agreement via between Phase III Brewing Company, LLC, and the city of Elmhurst, DuPage and Cook Counties, Illinois. See item 7.12.
All right. May I have a motion to approve 10.1? Alderman Brennan with a motion. Alderman Nardini with a second. Alderman Brennan.
Thank you, Mayor. So, in the report that we approved under the consent agenda, Phase III is having a function starting April 9. One of the downsides of a Fifth Monday is that we saw this at the last meeting that we had in March, but then we had a Fifth Monday, which brought us to tonight. So, given that this is going to start on my 31st wedding anniversary, by the way, I feel shameless right now, but nonetheless, it's going to come up here on the 9th, and therefore, in the report, we did request and approved suspension of rules. So, that's what we're voting on.
The first wedding anniversary is paper, and the 31st is beer, so that should work out okay.
Perfect.
All right. Any other discussion on ordinance 10.1? Clerk Tamer.
Cahill.
Aye.
Toledo.
Aye.
Park.
Aye.
Nudera.
Aye.
Bastido.
Aye.
Nardini.
Aye.
Brennan.
Aye.
Erby.
Aye.
Bellinger.
Aye.
Verimus.
Aye.
Hill absent.
Shenko.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Bram.
Aye.
13 ayes, 0 nays, 1 absent.
13 ayes, 0 nays, 1 absent. Ordinance 10.1 passes. Clerk Tamer, please read ordinance 10.2.
An ordinance authorizing the city of Elmhurst to waive bidding and purchase of three 2025 Ford Maverick all-wheel-drive hybrid vehicles for the city's fire department and community development department, and authorizing the disposal and sale of auction, buy auction of three vehicles consisting of one 2012 Toyota Prius, one 2013 Dodge Caravan, and one 2007 Ford Crown Victoria. See item 7.16.
All right. You have a motion to bring, approve 10.2. Alderman Bastido, second. Alderman Cahill. Alderman Bastido.
Thank you, Mayor. I was absent this meeting. I was on spring break with my family, so I'm going to turn it over to Vice Chair Cahill, who ran this meeting.
Alderman Cahill.
Great. Thank you. Like Alderman Brennan, I prepared a small remark, so it's going to take me a little bit, but no.
[laughing]
Shut up. Here before you tonight is the, 7.16 on the consent agenda. We are asking for you to waive the need to come back again because of the same thing. The reason is, we had an extra week in between. These vehicles are very hard to find, and so we're at risk of potentially losing the opportunity to purchase them, so that we are asking us to waive that, so that we can, suspend the rules, sorry, so that we can move forward and to hopefully purchase these vehicles.
Alderman Cahill, any discussion? Clerk Tamer.
Cahill.
Aye.
Toledo.
Aye.
Park.
Aye.
Nudera.
Aye.
Bastido.
Aye.
Nardini.
Aye.
Brennan.
Aye.
Erby.
Aye.
Bellinger.
Aye.
Verimus.
Aye.
Hill absent.
Shenko.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Bram.
Aye.
13 ayes, 0 nays, 1 absent.
13 ayes, 0 nays, 1 absent. 10.2 passes. Item 11, other business. Is there any other business to be brought before the council this evening? Seeing none, may I have a motion to, oh, yes. Alderman Erby.
Can I make a couple announcements, Mayor, or events?
Well, we passed announcements, but we're going to make a special dispensation. Go right ahead.
All right. Thank you. The York Township Annual Meeting is tomorrow, starts at 6 o'clock, well, 7 o'clock. Last time I was there, we're standing room only around 6:30. So, that's a pretty important event. That'll be at the York Township Center, 1502 South Myers Road. Second event is held by one of our prestigious past council members. Representative Marty Dorder will be housing, having her first public event with the Regional Transportation Authority, April 15, at 7:00 p.m. at her Westmont office. That does it.
All right. We'll go on to that last item adjournment. Alderman Toledo with a motion. Alder Verimus with a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Thank you. Wear a jern.